One to regularly schedule Biloxi City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 23rd, 1:30 PM. We don't have any, okay. We have a substitution.
Mr. President, I have a substitution.
Have a motion.
Move.
All right, we have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Felix Gines.
We have one substitution.
One.
Item, item five, Hotel 5H.
Okay, I gotta ask, all in, all in favor? All right, seven zero.
To our consent agenda, we're substituting item 5H, which is a resolution authorizing an MOU between the city of Biloxi and the West Biloxi Boardwalk Boat Ramp Joint Project.
Come on.
All right, we have a first as amended, we have a second. Second by Mr. Gines, any discussion? All in favor? Six zero with Mr. Deming out of the room. All right, we'll now move to our presentation agenda. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. You got a mic? Got a mic? I'm gonna come up and she'll bring up the whole crew from the Hibernia and hope everybody's enjoying being Irish today and the, and the treats that she, you know, we missed the parade and some of these other things, but we're appreciative of what you've done and everybody's efforts to bring this heritage back, back before the city. So let me read this proclamation. And whereas for four centuries, Americans of Irish heritage have contributed their lives and fortunes to their adopted country. And whereas the Irish were the largest European group to inhabit the 13 colonies in the 75 years up to the 1776 Revolution and played a significant role in the War for Independence. And whereas Irish Americans have excelled in every facet of life, including education, science, medicine, the arts, and politics. And whereas the Hibernia Society of Mississippi was formed to foster, promote, perpetuate Irish traditions, heritage and fellowship of Irish and Irish-American descendants along the Mississippi Gulf Coast and is a viable ethnic organization that contributes energy and funds to enhance the quality of life. Now, therefore, I Andrew Fofo O'Gillich, Mayor of the city of Biloxi hereby proclaim the month of March 2021 as Irish Heritage Month. So Celeste. Wait a minute, hold that, give me a little mask on. I smile. There we go. Thank you. Celeste, would you like to?
I would just like to, I would just like to thank Janie and Susan for always getting this together and thank you to the city and to the city council for allowing us to do this. And don't worry, when we come back with that parade, it's going to be bigger than ever. So let's hope we can get to it this year.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, very cool.
Thank you, thank you.
How are you?
There's a parade here. Maybe. Sorry, chief.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Celeste.
See you, B.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I think numbers, we saw Governor on the, on the national news today talking about your conditions and, you know, coming back to normal, at least leading in a direction. So we want to thank everybody for doing their part, wearing their mask, getting vaccinated, and hopefully in the next couple of months, I think we'll be rocking and rolling like we used to. So 2020 is behind us, 2021 is ahead of us. So we thank everyone and I think we'll do everything we can to push it back to where we were before this thing hit. So I think that concludes my report. Mike, unless I missed something?
May I, if I could, Mayor, I just want the council to realize where we are in the FEMA, the chase for FEMA dollars for Hurricane Zeta. As reported a couple of weeks ago, we have over 50 projects, individual projects that are damage repairs that we're working through FEMA with. They had inspection teams here this last week and went to the site of all of our projects. In the meantime, we've been jamming lots of data together, submitting everything is, I mean, tickets from the landfill showing the debris removal and all that sort of thing. So all that's going up to FEMA, a huge dump of data, including the canceled, over $2 million of canceled checks. And we just learned today that the first of our projects has gotten, been assigned a number, a FEMA number, which means that it is close to being obligated. So we're, we feel pretty good about the fact that we'll start seeing the flow of money coming back downhill here pretty soon.
And that concludes our report.
And that concludes our report.
That's my question. You said you have a lot of them. How many claims do we still have out?
Well, there are over 50 projects. Some of them are very small projects, like a fence around a well station or a fence around a lift station. And some of them are larger projects, like MGM Park or the pedestrian crosswalks, the elevators and so forth. So each one is an individual project, each one has individually, we have to jam the data together, estimates and so forth.
And there's a big part of the equation is what we hit, what we recover in insurance. So that's backed off the figure as we, you know, go forward, like the claims at the visitor center, the roof and those kinds of things. So it's all, again, Tanya has been heading that group up for years as far as how it gets in the mode for reimbursement, but the basically, you know, the big checks like we cut for the debris removal, you know, it's important that it gets paid, check gets canceled, the expense gets submitted for reimbursement and then we wait for that to come down the road. But that, that credit line that we established, not $10 million, but if we needed to, but as, as these things get reimbursed, whatever we borrowed to, you know, to help the cash flow will be paid back. So I think the two big hitters is about $2 million has been paid for debris removal. And so things are in motion. As Mike said, some of this has been in-house done stuff and some other purchase orders that vendors have done. So as these things are paid, they're submitted and we just wait for the money to flow back.
Of the $10 million that we borrowed, how much have we paid?
We didn't borrow, we established a $10 million credit line, that's right.
Funded, but it's $10 million.
Yeah.
A little over $3 million.
Right.
We've paid about $3 million.
How much of that have we spent so far?
$3 million.
$3 million.
That's all, whatever we, whatever we spend, that's what goes against the credit line.
Okay, thank you.
And as it's paid back, we pay that off, that's right.
Any other questions? All right, if not, we don't have any departmental reports, we'll move to our council reports. Start with Dr. Tisdale. I can hear you, I don't know if you're coming through the system or not.
I'm back of it.
Is that better?
Yeah, you got it.
Okay, thank you. Two things really. I know that when we were budgeting for this current fiscal year, we did not include the city summer camp. We were going to look at the cash flow and the revenue and kind of see, see what it looked like. And I'm thinking with school out here in a number of weeks, if we're going to proceed with summer camp, it's got to be funded, personnel have to be hired, you know, summer camp staff and stuff like that, and parents need to be given some notice. So we might want to look at that on maybe the next agenda or two. Our next, next meeting will be Wednesday, April 7th, and I'm thinking it might be a good time to look at that and just see whether we can offer that or not because we'll need to get the word out. The second thing deals with the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. And I think this came out last March or April or whatever, and the decision was made to exclude or opt out for firefighters and law enforcement, which you could do. But what it also, the impact that it's had and what it's meant is that in some instances, employees who wanted to come to work and could come to work but were quarantined, "I want to come to work but I'm quarantined, so I, you're not letting me come to work that day." And for those first responders, my understanding is that, A, they lost a day of annual leave and then additionally...
They didn't lose it, they used it. I just, I have to correct people when they say that.
Okay, so let me, let me put it in terms that we can all understand and, and so we're not dueling over semantics, and I get your point, Mr. Leonard. And that is, I want to, I'm a fireman, Ms. Newman's a fireman, and Mr. Lawrence, who always has looked like a fireman, we're at one station. Mr. Lawrence tests positive for the coronavirus. Ms. Newman wants to come to work, she tests negative. I want to come to work, I test negative. But Ms. Newman is charged with a day of annual leave and I'm charged with a day of annual leave. And then after that, we have to stay home, I'm assuming that comes out of our sick leave. The point, the point being, those are the only two departments where this, where these employees were impacted in this manner. And because of that, as, as the rules, I guess, and the precautions from CDC and maybe other agencies with guidelines, the circumstances may have changed to some extent in terms of when folks could come to work, not come to work or whatever, and I get that, that changed over time. So what I'd, what I'd like for an administrative report on or before April 7th, which is two weeks from now, is three things. One is a rationale, what's, what was the rationale to exclude the first responders? I mean, the decision was made administratively, the council had no, took no action, had no role in that decision. I'm sure there's a reason for it, I don't know what the reason is, depends on who you talk to, I imagine, among the employees, but there was a rationale. What's the rationale? The second thing would be to identify those employees who were charged leave or had their pay impacted because they were, and this is my phrase, involuntarily quarantined. Again, Ms. Newman, I want to come to work, but we can't come to work because we're quarantined, didn't have the virus at the time, tested negative. And then the third thing is, and you may have to lump these employees in different buckets depending on the circumstances as, as time went by. Then the third thing is, what options are available to restore their leave or pay? So does two weeks give you enough time for that?
Sure does.
Okay, that's all, I'll, I'll look for that, and if you can get it to me before then, that's fine, I appreciate it, I know it's kind of a, it's a task, but I'm thinking between department heads and the folks in the personnel department, they ought to be able to determine who was impacted, how, and we can kind of see how many folks are affected and what the circumstances are, and then consider options, maybe the council can consider options on what to do to make these individuals whole, if that's possible. Thank you, that concludes my report, thank you. All right, Ms. Newman? Mr. Deming? Mr. Lawrence?
Hello?
Last week I bought about the Sweptman House, did you look at it? Did you, can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you now.
Did you look at anything with the Sweptman House?
No, I didn't personally.
Do we have to put a resolution on here to give it back to them? Because it's not doing us any good, so we have to put a resolution on and give it back to them, the Sweptman House, that we need to get it back to them. When all the constriction and everything got on, it's not doing us any good, other than the homeless people living behind it.
Yeah.
So would it take that from us to give it?
We'll get a plan for the next meeting and see if there's, if what's doable and what opportunities there are with the house and, you know, and in lieu of what we've, the dollars committed to the project, I think you said it's about 250,000 set up for the thing?
They've, yes, Mayor, they've set up an account to pay, so that there's no impact on the city.
But the 250,000 is sitting in, in one of our cash accounts, is that right?
It's sitting in a People's Bank account that we draw on, that they maintain, that we draw on when we need it.
Yeah.
To do repairs and so forth.
To unhook or to establish a direction, we're going to make sure we're not stepping on or going in a direction we, we would have some consequences. And I think Peter Abad will, will give us some direction on what the status is, on what we can do to either go or no-go with the property.
Yeah, but understand there's no impact on the city at this time, that they, any, any cost of repairs and so forth are paid out of their, the fund that they set up.
I'll, by the next meeting, I'll look at the agreement we have with them, it's possible we can dispose of it to another charity or something like that, but we'll explain some options and that's something the, the council should do, but I think, I think the, the folks that donated should have some input into what they would like to see as well, rather than us just putting a resolution on.
We need to look at that, because we don't need another piece of property that we have to just maintain and we can't do anything with it.
It is, it is maintenance free, but it's still the administration of doing it.
Just a building sitting there deteriorating because it's not, has no use right now at all for anything. That's what I'm saying, if it takes a resolution to give it back to them, then I'll bring that resolution and put it back on the table. It's just not doing us any good. We don't need another building, another piece of property maintained with no use.
Well, we'll have a plan for you for the next meeting and after Peter does some research and what are, you know, what are the best options for us to go forward, we'll bring that to council's attention.
And Mike, I talked the other day, you said you ordered all the pedestals for the harbors, any of those come in yet? Electrical pedestals?
No, I think they're on order still, we mentioned that Monday, didn't we, I think?
The pedestals are on order.
So it hadn't come in.
So and to tell you the truth, Councilman, I'm a little nervous that we're going to have them in time for the, the Billfish Tournament, but we're pressing.
When they come in, are we going to put them up or we have to hire somebody to put them up?
No, I think we've, we'll put them up with the existing contractor that is working, doing the work right now on the, some of the big power supplies. But I think there's a number of them, as I recall what Larry was saying, the pedestals that are out are for the other areas, I'm not sure what piers, but there may be a number of, for where the big boats are going, that is our main concern. But a lot of the ones that are out on those other piers, the smaller boats.
Yeah, I know the commercial was like Mike had said earlier, it's, it's a big problem because you have to deal with MEMA and FEMA to get the concrete and all the pollen put back together, then the fences put up, you have to wait for them to look at it, see what it is, I don't know whether we had in that process, but, you know, harbor's coming, this time of the year is going to be busy with the shrimp season and everything coming up. I know we can't probably get it done before then, but I mean, that's, that's a lot of, what do you want to call them, small businesses out there that need a lot of help right now because of the harvest. I know we're trying the best we can and it's not a fast process dealing with FEMA and MEMA, but something we have to look at because that affects the city of Biloxi a lot. So just keep all the updates you can with me and Mike, I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Deming?
First, I want to say, was it last night we were at the candidate forum? I guess you weren't there. Kenny, Paul, I think there was more, more candidates than, than participer, than viewers, but I appreciate you guys being there, you guys did a great job speaking. Mr. Mayor, the light situation in the city, both traffic lights and streetlights, I've had a couple of people ask me about traffic lights, we've updated many traffic lights in major intersections that seem to be newer, maybe more resistant to storm damages than the other ones. Do we have a plan on updating the other traffic lights throughout the city?
Well, again, we're on order with a number of, especially the turn signal lights that have been damaged most of the case, but I think Bill Ray was indicated in our meeting, there's a number of things that are still on order. I guess everybody around...
We submitted, Mayor, we submitted 12 DDIRs, and if I can remember what that stands for, but it's damage, debris damage reports basically to, on street lights, signal lights, to MDOT. What happens next is MDOT then gathers those up from everybody and they do an MOU with us and, and they give us the funding to, to repair the lights. So we know that, we know there's money coming from MDOT. A lot of the lights got put together from parts, spare parts that we had or borrowed. And so, so, you know, there's a lot, there was a lot of cost to us just getting the lights back up again. I think what we'd like to do, and the mayor and I have talked about this, and we've talked to engineering about it, is to do, as part of our FEMA effort, to do a, a project where we upgrade, go to mast, more of the mast arm type.
And not the wire hung.
Rather than hanging, rather than hanging type. And do, and, and if that's the case, if we, if we can make the case that that will reduce damages at future storms, there's always a good possibility that FEMA will fund those at 100, 100% above whatever our original cost was. So, no, we're, we're planning on putting in one of those kinds of projects, but those mast arm lights, like at the VA, at the corner of Veterans Boulevard and so forth, we're talking about a half a million dollars each one. It's a, it's a big, big cost for us to suck up.
I didn't realize street lights were that expensive. What about any efforts to coordinate traffic lights? I know, I think we've talked about this.
Synchronize, well, again, we've had issue after issue, especially between the I-110 interchange in Small Craft Harbor, and I experienced that the other night too, that sometimes it takes you five minutes and sometimes it takes you 25 minutes for the same half a mile that you go. There's some rules and regs that MDOTs, as, as far as not having to wait from cross streets to go there, and it's just been true frustration to synchronize that, while our efforts was to say for a particular set of time during the day, especially rush hour or in the morning or in the afternoon. Again, we continue to struggle with synchronization right there. There's also some opportunities at Pass Road and there, you know, if you ever try to go north, coming down Pass Road from the west and you see a turn signal line, I mean, there's some things that could be done to, to do some things, but again, MDOT is a sort of, we're at their mercy on what we can do to automate or, you know, minimize the, the wait time that you see now. But we're, we're trying and there are a number of places like that, and then maybe there's some things that we can do, especially on Bayview with some, everybody stopping at two lights that are flashing red and it should be flashing orange. But it's, it's an ongoing continual kind of effort to identify them and have a solution that will give us some, you know, some grace on.
What about the street lights that are on and approaching Pops Ferry Road? I know we've talked about this, it's still extremely dark as you travel down Pops Ferry Road, approaching that bridge, and of course, the bridge is probably 75% of those lights aren't on. I don't know if this is a, if this is a discretionary thing and we decide to turn the lights off, or if it's just a ministerial thing that we haven't had them repaired or haven't had the, the energy cooperatives out there to repair them.
Well, I have found that the co-op, that, that, as you know, it's Mississippi Power on this side of the bay, the co-op on the other side of the bay, I found they've been very responsive. If we tell them there's an out, a light out, they get out there and replace it. So I would ask, you know, any, anybody, as you're roaming around your council ward, your ward area, if you see street lights out, let us know. Call that into public, the Public Works number and they will make a call to either the Mississippi Power or the co-op and, and put it on their list. I've found that when we tell them about something being out, you'd think they'd be the ones out looking for it, but I've, I've found that they're pretty good about responding.
Okay, well, great, I will get you a comprehensive list of those lights that are, are not illuminated currently. Do we have a contact with the Camp Wilkes area?
The Boy Scouts?
Yeah, who runs that, that property?
The Boy Scouts.
I remember the original, the one that was running it is no longer there anymore, I think he actually passed away. I don't, the last time I spoke with him, this was seven years ago, at the beginning of my first term. I don't know who runs it, I don't have a contact there, I was wondering if you guys had a contact with anybody?
Councilman, I do have a contact, I can give it to you if you need it.
I do.
She's actually been appointed on the tree committee for Ward 6 and she's very involved and she can fill in the other contact people for you.
Great, thank you, Councilman Glavine, I appreciate that. Now, where are we at on, on golf carts? Have we put together a proposal to get to MDOT? I see, I see Peter Abid stand up, so he must have an update.
Golf carts, yeah, that legislation has passed and we're going to go ahead and start the first reading and the second reading next month, based on the template we already had, had attached, our legislation. So that'll be available to start your engines on July 1st, but we will be able to register folks, I think in June, May and June is, is the plan, so.
Thank you, Peter. Mr. Mayor, Mike, if you would help me out with the bathrooms at the Pops Ferry Sports Complex, where we have the fields, the new, the new facilities that we opened up, I know we've had some issues with vandalism in there at times, but we do have a lot of groups out there, youth groups that are there during the day. If we could coordinate with Ms. Bell's staff to get those opened, unlocked and opened and usable.
You're talking about bathrooms?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, you're talking about, we're talking about bathrooms at Clausway Park?
No.
No, at the, at the sports complex across from Margaret Sherry Library. Yeah, the, the new facilities that were just built, they stay locked, but, and I've, I've called her and I've had her come out infrequently to open them for certain events that I'm aware of, or people have called me, but I think we need to, to get these on a schedule instead of me having to call Ms. Bell's department for, for every event that happens out there and request special permission to use those bathrooms. I think they're public facilities and should be available to the public. If we have to open them and close them at night, I understand that, but I think they should be made available.
Well, there's some scheduling, I mean, there's some schedules that are, that are known, and so we should be able to coordinate that, when people are using the things, that will be available.
Okay.
We'll do that.
It's just overtime.
No, well, whatever, as far as opening and closing them.
Last but not least, bringing up what, what Paul was talking about with the firemen and the COVID, what do you, I don't know what the word is, I guess, the, the quarantine periods that, that are either not paid or they use their sick leave. I just, my, my only question is, was the decision to not pay them as we do other departments based off of the passage of the CARE Act in March of 2020?
There was a lot of consideration given to how we would make up, you know, extraordinary expenses based, I know we went, the people who did work got time and a half, then the people who didn't, did not get paid, then we, we could pull the trigger on, on keeping it up, but again, we'd be part of a claim for extraordinary expenses. So that's a big consideration on, on the actions we did take for the submission of our COVID reimbursement ask. I think that total would be about 1.6 million.
So my question is, was that consideration made because of the passage of the CARE Act? Are we asking for reimbursement for those first responders that didn't get coverage?
Right.
For that period? Is there a way to get them reimbursed for their missed time and money through the CARE Act?
Reimbursed, supplement that, you know, reinstate the time that they took off.
Right.
All right, there's some possibilities, but you know, again, we'll, we'll visit that and, you know, with the next, you know, couple of weeks, we'll actually have a plan to, to bring to you.
The Family First Coronavirus Response Act allowed us to make a decision to pre, to exempt certain categories of workforce that would be adversely affected if we, if we've made them eligible. Because of the fact that at the time, remember, it so reminds me of Dr. Fauci here, you know, what we know now, we didn't know then. When the COVID first hit, you remember the very first thing that happened was Fire Station 7, one guy got sick and so everybody else, it started to spread and everybody else took off. And after a while, the fire department and to a lesser degree, the police had a lot of people parked and not coming to work. And at the ti, at the time, we made, we made the decision, the mayor made the decision to exempt fire and police first responders from that act, which would have paid them to stay home. Now, prior to that decision being made, a couple of weeks went by where, where we were just making it up as we went, trying to figure the rules out. And now the rule that was in effect at the time was the city rule that if you're, if you're sick and you go home, you're on sick leave for the, you're on annual leave for the first day and then you're on sick leave for days after that. So that was the rule at the time. Some of these firemen did actually come, get positive and, and, and because of that, they lost, they used their leave and they were able to file workers' comp claims. Some of them didn't ever get sick, so they self, they, they stayed home, but, but they didn't have, they didn't, they weren't sick, so they couldn't file a workers' comp claim. We think the numbers in the neighborhood of 10 to 12 firemen and several days of, of vacation that they used, that they'd like to get paid back for, it's not a big number, but the rule, the, the decision we made at the time was that we would go with... didn't have, they didn't, they weren't sick, so they couldn't file a workers' comp claim. We think the numbers in the neighborhood of 10 to 12 firemen, and several days of a vacation that they used, that they'd like to get paid back for, it's not a big number, but the rule, the, the, the decision we made at the time was that we would go with the city rules that stood, we would make up a new rule.
And that, and when you use payback, we reinstate hours.
So when, when we went to FEMA and the state, MEMA, for reimbursement, we were asking for reimbursement for extraordinary expenses, which meant the people that we were paying double time, you, you remember that the people that were coming to work were, were during that period, emergency period, were getting time and a half. So that's what, that's what we asked for, we asked for the money for all our extraordinary expenses.
Mr. Leonard and, and Mr. Mayor, I find no way impugning your decision. That is not at all what I intend to do right now. All I want to do is help compensate those that, that protect the city and suffered financially because of this whole system, that's all. If, when you provide Mr. Tisdale with his report, could you add in there some form of?
Remedy.
Remedy to what it would cost to reinstate.
It wouldn't, if, we reinstate those, those hours, I don't think anybody lost any money. Everybody was paid.
They just used.
They used the balance of whatever accrual they may have, so we would reinstate that in the rule.
Let me rephrase the word, I shouldn't have used money, I should have used value.
Yeah.
So they did lose value, they suffered a loss that they could use at the expense of the city, which would be translated into money at the time. But if you would just give me a, an aggregate value of what it would cost to reinstate that, I would appreciate it. This ends my George Lawrence moment of long council periods, you can.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Glavine?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We really enjoyed a spirited municipal candidates forum last night, it was a lot of fun, but I tell you that asking questions like, will you raise taxes, how do you fix the homeless, and a number of other issues, they only gave us one minute, and the only person I know that probably could achieve an answer in one minute is Fofo, but we, we tried, Fofo, we gave it our best shot, but it was a good night. Couple of issues just occurring in my ward that I just want to tie up some loose ends, and, and this was something that I thought was going to be a, a resolution to a speeding problem in Taylor Oaks. Mike, you're well aware of it, I just want to get it on the record at this council meeting that I, I don't think it's totally resolved, if we can't trim that speed table down to match what we did and hinge it in place, I think we got a problem with the owners, they don't like the look of it. Of course, there's, for safety reasons, they put reflective poles, so people won't veer off and go into the, to the neighbors or the residents' yard, that's an issue from an aesthetic standpoint. I pledged to them that I'd, I'd work with the administration, see if we can come up with some kind of modification, if we can't, then we may have to go to Plan C if Plan B doesn't work in that area. And I, I'm really heartbroken, because we worked, put a lot of time and effort working with the HOA, and if y'all remember, we had about 14 members come to this, one of our council meetings, and plead that we find a resolution, which we did, but it, it didn't work out that way at the current time. So I know this is a tricky one, but we, we need to find a fix for it. The other thing.
They did fix one thing for us, Councilman, it's probably the last speed table we'll ever do.
Yeah, but you know, it.
Lesson learned.
Really an anomaly, yeah, it is a lesson learned, maybe we need to revisit and make sure that we have, you know, we had the majority of the HOA members that were participating, but there was an equal amount, I guess, that didn't, a silent majority that certainly voiced their opinion when we were trying to do the right thing. The intentions were for the right purpose, but if we can continue to work for an ultimate resolution, that would be a good thing. The other thing, Wetzel Drive, very populated area, if y'all remember, we paved this road several years ago, there was only three houses, there's now about 20 houses that's in this stretch of road. They're requesting a street light because of the schoolchildren are, are in the dark almost, and if we can look at a, where to position a new street light and request that from Coast Electric, or whomever we need to request that from, that'd be great. I did contact Bruce Marie, and he said, hey, y'all do that, not us. Y'all put the request in, I thought it was going to be easy fix going through him, but that would be great if we can, see if we can expedite that with those school buses coming down that fairly narrow road.
I'll, I'll send you a map, and if you could just put a dot on the map, or dots on the map.
And I'll visit every single home on there to make sure the light isn't going to shine brighter in their, their home. But I appreciate the administration for that, and that concludes my report, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Guines?
Yes, just one or two things. Streets are looking very good, all the painting is down and everything, and the only thing we're waiting on is to finish up a few of the punch lists that are out there, mainly the fencing. So I appreciate Walt getting back with me on the status of the punch list. The other thing, I just want to thank Memorial Hospital on this Friday for bringing the COVID shots to the community, and this Friday, we will be getting our second shots in the community, along with the city, city employees, so that was, that was a biggie, and they committed to doing it again down the road, so, so that concludes my report.
They actually committed, Councilman, on Friday to do in the rest of our city employees for the first shot, so long as we could provide the facility for the second shot in, in April, April 15th and 16th, so we'll have some more folks joining you tomorrow.
Okay, great, great, thanks.
I just have a couple of things, I wanted to remind everyone, April 15th, we'll be having a ribbon cutting for the Wool Market City Center, followed by a Ward Seven meeting, so any of the department heads that can make it, that would be great, so we can get an update to everyone. Also, I was with Public Works, you know, we always, when we have a significant rain event, we get calls on flooding and stuff, and one of the, the deals that we have with Culvert says, every time we request to use the vacuum truck, it's tied up in the South. And so this budget year, I would like to see us try to get another vacuum truck for the North, try to work that into the budget to where it's not something where we get that once every three months, or once every two months, or whatever it is, to correct these issues, and, you know, these people have to suffer this over and over again, because we don't have the adequate equipment to get those pumped out. And then another thing is the, the boom thing, I don't know what it's called, that goes on the side of the tractor, I know it costs about $50,000 to trim along the side, that's something that's needed in the North as well. And, you know, the North, we have, I don't know, I know just in my wards, 55% of the land, and then if you incorporate Ward Four and Ward Six, we're probably talking about 70% of the land in the city, so if we could get one of those for the North, that would be great, that, just something to look at as we get closer to talking about budget. And then just for clarification for myself, what Mr. Tisdale and Robert were referring to, people only in the police and fire department had to use leave if they were quarantined because they came in contact? Is that correct?
The, the.
I know you're going to do a report and all, I just, just for my clarification, just so.
It was only the police and fire department first responders that were exempt from the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, meaning they, the ones that, that, that we could pay up to X number of days.
Okay.
That also included the people that, who had kids in school, that couldn't go to school.
Okay, so if you were a police or fire person, and you came in contact, or couldn't work, or whatever, because of, you were made to stay home, even if you didn't have it?
Or you chose to stay home.
Okay, and so the only way that they would get paid is if they use their sick leave, or, or vacation days?
If they stayed home to self-quarantine, they were on vacation, they were using vacation.
All right, I just wanted to make sure I was getting, okay, that's it.
They were, they were paid, but they were using their vacation to be paid.
Okay, all right, that's, that concludes my report. We'll now move on to the public agenda, citizen comments, total allotted time will be 45 minutes. Anyone who wishes to speak will have a, a total of three minutes, when you come forward before you speak, please state your name and sign in, into the sign in sheet at the table. If there's anyone on my left and your right side of the room, please come forward, my left, your right.
Thank you.
Don't surprise me.
All right, Mr. Tisdale, here's a couple pictures y'all can pass around, look at it, look at it. He tell me that gate hung there right, I'll give you a million bucks. Okay, and they gonna pay somebody to do that? All right, I had a, shit, oh, thank you. All right, I had a.
Sir, if you will, please state your name.
John Higgins, I live on 224 Aquarans, 7th House on the right, it'd be real hard to miss it, y'all need to go by there and look at it. Mr. Mayor and city council members, I want to inform you today that I'm filing an ADA complaint with the U.S. Department of Justice and Architectural and Transportation Barrier Compliance Board in Washington, DC. City of Biloxi is in violation of ADA compliance, and as a result of removing my sidewalk and my driveway during street repairs and putting it back with pitch too high, and for a safe walk down to my driveway to the sidewalk, it, it, you can't, you can't, I fall, keep falling down trying to get out of my yard. As a result, as a disabled man, I have already fallen down the driveway several times as a result of the city project. Mr. Mayor and city council members, you are responsible for the work done on our city streets, because you approved the contracts for the vendors, you hired and dug out and placed sidewalks, driveways and fences. You cannot blame this poor workmanship on negligence of the contractors, you approved the street work, as taxpayers, we paid for it. I'm one of, one of many who has been home shaken, had his home shaken apart, sidewalk and driveway destroyed, and now my, my new fence and gate are put back so they don't properly function. If the city does not make these repairs correctly and save for those, all of us who are seniors and disabled, I have no other recourse but to take legal action. I was told by one of your project managers to make a claim, well, to repair my house, and as I've been told by the neighbors and many who have such claims, one of them is six years ago, and he still ain't done anything. And there's, there's about a dozen more I've talked to, they're anywhere from five to this year, have not had nothing done. That was all right when they, it is time for the federal government to step in, since the funds for these street repairs came from HUD and other federal funds. Now, I mean, when you can't put a simple fence up, what are y'all doing paying people? And then they tell me y'all gotta be voting on whether they're going to fix any of this stuff in my house? You know, I got 11 people on my street that got bad house problems, well, y'all got lucky, two of them are dead, so you only got to deal with nine of them now. And there's a whole bunch, I walked across the street, talked to Ms., I'm not going to say any names, this lady, and she, and I know her, I'm 65, she's probably 85.
I'm sorry, sir, your time is up.
That's all right. Read the Clarion ledger.
Is there anyone else on my left and your right that would like to speak? My left and your right. Is there anyone on my right and your left that would like to speak? Please come forward and sign in at the table and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Josh Piku. I would ask that you guys reconsider the zoning change for 2462 Beacon to RM 30 from RS 10, the current vote is RM 10. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my right and your left? My right, your left, anyone in the back of the room? All right, if there's no one else, we'll now close citizen comments, and we'll move to our policy agenda.
Ordinance to approve a change in zoning from AR Agricultural restricted to RS 7.5 medium density for property unaddressed fronting upon Baywood Drive.
Hold, hold on one second, Lucy, we're going to get you to reread that. All right, if you will, reread that for us, please.
Ordinance to approve a change in zoning from AR Agricultural restricted to RS 7.5 medium density, single family, for parcels unaddressed fronting upon Baywood Drive.
Second, all right, we have a first by Mr. Demming, a second by Mr. Glavine, this is first reading, we'll now move to item B.
Ordinance to amend table use non-residential and planned development districts as it relates to multifamily dwellings as within the WF Waterfront District Zones.
Okay, this was moved originally by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Tisdale, do I have any discussion?
Jerry, this is the text amendment, what are you actually doing here?
Yes, sir, this is just a, a housekeeping thing. Under the ordinance, the multifamily dwellings were listed as a conditional use in waterfront zoning, they should have been allowed as a permitted use, because we allow apartments and condominiums and other things there. So all this is, is a housekeeping change to allow multifamily dwellings to be a permitted use in waterfront.
Thank you, that's good enough.
Mr. Tisdale? I have nothing to add, thank you. All in favor? 7-0. Item C.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment for parcel of land identified as 2462 Beacon Place.
This was originally moved by Mr. Tisdale and Mr. Guines. Any discussion?
Yes, the Planning Commission recommended this be rezoned to RM 10, and you don't see much of that, but as I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Creel, the, the parcel measures 90 by 64 feet, and the owner requested a change in zoning from RS 10, legal but non-conforming, to RM 30, and, and the current structure is operating it as a duplex. The, the Planning Commission cannot expand on the request, but they can restrict the request, and the Planning Commission believe that RM 10 would be more appropriate.
That's correct.
All right, now, Mr. Piku also asked, or considered asking at that time, the Planning Commission, or I think he was asked, or made the request to have it rezoned to RM 20 or RM 30.
30.
Okay, I'm, I'm no community development guy, but I'm thinking if you go to RM 20 or RM 30, that's 20 or 30 units per acre.
That's correct.
And this parcel is 90 by 60, so my, my thinking is that, and my rationale is that the Planning Commission acted appropriately with an RM 10, it moved it from, made it conforming in a residential area.
That's correct.
My understanding also is that Mr. Piku does not own the property to the west of this parcel, he just bought this parcel with the duplex. So I think the, the zone change to RM 10 by the Planning Commission was appropriate. I just, if you could follow that, thank you.
There's a, there's an existing duplex on this piece of property, and it's a legal non-conforming, because it's a duplex operating in single-family zoning. Mr. Piku came in and filed an application to have the zoning, to bring the property into compliance, the zoning into compliance. into compliance, the zoning into compliance with the use on the property. On his application, he requested RM30. Now, there's a- a rule in planning that says that when you're seeking a zoning change, uh, you are to seek and- and request the least intensive zoning necessary to accomplish the purpose that you're trying to- to set out to, uh, get approved. In this case, uh, the jump from, uh, the jump to RM30 seemed to be excessive. The least intensive zoning that Mr. Piku needed to bring his property into compliance was RM10. Now, when he filed the application, he had, uh, told the staff that he, uh, was not interested in doing short-term rental. And the big difference between the RM10 and the RM30 is that RM30 would allow short-term rental as a conditional use. RM10 does not allow short-term rental. So the Planning Commission chose to reduce the intensity of the request on the application down to the least zoning necessary to accomplish the purpose of bringing the duplex into compliance. After the meeting, after the meeting, uh, Mr. Piku called back in and said, "Well, really, I think I need to, uh, go after what I'd originally requested," which was the RM30. So we told him that what he would need to do is to come before the city council, uh, and he could make that request. So there's where we are.
All right. Mr. Guines, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I have no- no further comments. I, um, would comply with the, uh, Planning Commission.
Okay, any other discussion? Mr. Tisdale, this is your word?
That's correct.
Okay.
Excuse me.
All right.
Ran- ran into the microphone there. I apologize.
All right. Any other discussion?
I just, and I, as I understand it, this was unanimous by the Planning Commission. There were no opposition, right?
That was a fourteen-o vote. That's correct.
That's right.
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I... Can I hear from Josh?
Sure.
Mr. Piku?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Piku, tell me what- tell me about your property and your plan.
Um, so I really just wanna have the option. So I don't wanna have to, like, come back and apply if I choose to do short-term rental. We don't have any plans to right now, but the goal is like, I know that's like the rule of thumb of like, don't zone if you don't have to, but it'd save a bit of time if we could get it approved for RM30, because if I decide that I do wanna do short-term rental, I have the ability to. That was kinda like my premise.
Where does this property sit? I mean, I looked on the map at it, but can you describe its location for me?
Yeah, so it's like, it's on, if you go down Briarfield, you take a right, it's like right across from those apartments.
How far from the water is it?
I have no clue.
I might- might be able to answer some of these questions. It's on a through street between Briarfield and Pine Grove. On the south side, uh, half of that property is empty. The other half is part of, uh, what turns out to be that- that complex, short-term complex. On the north side of the street, you have a residence on the corner, you have the duplex, and then you have an empty lot to the west of that. So there are three properties on the north side. Residence, this particular duplex, and an empty lot on the corner.
So it has short-term rental complex on one side of it, nothing on one side of it, then it has- then it has single-family residential and multifamily residential on the other side of it, the northern side, correct?
I can't say that there's multifamily residential.
Or duplex.
The duplex, correct. And I think, Jerry, you might know, the, uh, the property to the east of this particular parcel, I think, is residential? RS10. And Briarfield, just before it was annexed by the city, had a number of different zonings out there. So there- there are enough different zones that you would think that's a small city out there. So some of it's zoned appropriately, some- some is, uh, has non- has legal but non-conforming over the years. So that's all I got for you.
Okay, um, Mr. Creel, thank you, Josh. I appreciate you coming to the- to the seat. Mr. Creel, as- as it stands right now, that location, because it's not, um, zoned correctly, it's an absolute bar to any form of short-term rental, and if we zoned it, um, RS, or excuse me, RM10, it would still carry along with it that absolute bar against short-term rental, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And however, the joint property is qualified for short-term rental. Being that the property is so small, I don't foresee that we're gonna- he's gonna propose a structure that grows massively in size, and the only purpose for doing an RM30 would be to add short-term rental on a property that close to the water next to other properties that are already short-term rental. Is there a way to satisfy both needs? Your desire to- to retain the rule that you'd wanna use the most or the least intrusive zone and also provide a pathway to something like short-term rental as his neighbors are allowed?
Well, you have- you have two options. You can either, uh, approve the RM10, which would prevent short-term rental. You can go to RM20, which is less intensive than the RM30, uh, but would open the door for him to come back and request a conditional use because whether you change it to RM20 or RM30, he's still gonna have to come back through public hearing and come back to the council for a, uh, conditional use permit if he chooses to do short-term rental.
Thank you, Mr. Creel. I'm gonna make a motion to amend the ordinance to reflect, uh, low-density single-family residential to RM20.
I- I did have a little question about that. I mean, why don't we take the slow route? I mean, this- this satisfies what he wants at this time. Why don't- why don't we just take the slow route and he'll have to come back to us if- if he wants a higher designation? I'm just asking the question, counsel.
I- I just think it skips a step. I don't know what the, I think, what would- what is the... Tell me what the approval process is for doing another- another, uh, zoning change versus a conditional use.
There's not a, I mean, if this gets approved, let's say this gets approved, there's not a time limit on him for when he can come back to seek a zoning change to another zoning.
But he would have to come back, he would have to go through the process to seek a zoning change?
That's correct.
Get the zone changed, then he would have to come back and go through the process again to seek conditional use. This saves us an entire process. So if he ever, if he were to choose to do that, the same thing that his neighbors are, it would save the Planning Commission, the council, and the applicant an entire process of approval. That's why I would consider doing it now.
So I- I have a question. So if I'm understanding correctly, if he's applying for, or it was recommended to be moved from RS10 to RM10. RM30 is right by use, or used by right, is that correct? To where he doesn't?
No, conditional use.
Okay, so what would be the difference in RM30 and RM20 then if he have to come directly to the council? Basically, this, he would just skip a step if he wanted to do short-term rental and not have to go to the Planning Commission, whether it was RM20 or RM30. What's the difference in the two?
None. The- the- the issue on the table here is- is the zoning change. And if you go ahead and approve the Planning Commission's recommendation, he would not be allowed to use it. But whether you go to RM- RM20 or RM30, he's still gonna have to come back to the Planning Commission and the city council to get a conditional use permit to do short-term rental.
Okay.
It just saves one.
And so basically, at this point, the only thing, if we did, if- if his amendment passed, the only thing that we would be doing was skipping the step of going before the Planning Commission.
And the council.
If, can you say that? If he decided to go short, if he wanted, if he decided he wanted to go short-term rental. If it passes as is, he would have to go to the Planning Commission and then come to us.
Uh, no, he would have to go back and ask for the zoning.
For a rezoning. So, so he would have to go to the Planning Commission, ask for rezoning, you would do a recommendation, and then it would come to us.
That's correct.
If his amendment passes as RM20, then the only thing he would have to do is file for conditional use.
That's correct.
And then it would come directly to council, and there wouldn't be a first or a second reading. It would just be a one-time deal, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Well, I- I just wanna add, what he wants to do is RM10, correct me if I'm wrong, Director, is it allows him to turn it into ten- ten apartments to be able to rent like an apartment, correct? If he chose to do that.
He would- he would be limited. Let's just say that he decides to tear down the structure that's on the property.
Yeah.
And wanted to rebuild. The number of units is gonna be limited by the size of the property.
Understand. Whatever those units are, but he can only rent them as apartments right at the current zoning that the Planning Commission unanimously approved.
That's correct, yes.
So I think we oughta move a little bit more methodically, and if, uh, his mindset changes, he goes through the regular process. You know, you never know what's gonna happen around that community. I see the single-family homes. I do see the multifamily homes on here and at his property. And I understand it, it, today, maybe it does look like it's suitable for short-term rentals, but you never know what tomorrow brings. And I would let the process run its course through the Planning Commission. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence?
You didn't want a piece of property that's 5,700 square feet. That's a seventh of an acre. The Planning Commission hit it right on the nose. You do RS10. You can't do 20 and 30. You got 5,000 square feet here. An acre is 43,000 square feet.
What's the dimensions of the property?
You got 5,700, that's a seventh of an acre. The Planning Commission did the right thing. It should be RS10. And 20, and nobody gonna pass that coming back. You with that small piece of property, put 30 units on it? Are you kidding me?
What's the dimensions of the property?
That's why he can't do it. It's- it, this- this purpose is just to give him the ability to- to use it as short-term rentals, not because he's gonna build 30 units. He can't. It's barred by the ability to- to build that many units. Per unit is based off of a square footage, so because it's so small, like you said, he can't come back and build 30 units or 20 units. He simply just wants the ability to use the property in the same fashion his neighbors around him are using theirs.
They have a duplex on the property. They're using a duplex as a duplex now?
Well, he's a legal non-conforming. I mean, i- i- that's the way it was built. That's the way it was grandfathered in. He can continue to use it as a duplex from now on, provided, uh, he doesn't stop for a one-year period of time at any point in the future. Then it would lose its use and it would- they would have to come back. So he really doesn't need a zoning change to continue to do what he's doing right now. But having said that, a lot of times when you're going to- to seek, uh, lending on a piece of property, uh, banks and financial institutions are not comfortable with a legal non-conforming situation. They wanna know that at least the property is zoned for the use that's on the property before they, uh, they lend money on it. So, uh, the- the RM10 is the least zoning necessary to bring the structure into compliance. If the council wants to consider allowing him to go to short-term rental, the next lease zoning would be the RM20. Now, the downside to that is, is that you've got, uh, you'd have RS10 on the corner, you'd have RM20 on this piece of property, and you'd have RM30 on the west side. So from a- from a planning standpoint, I mean, if we were just looking at this, it's better to expand an existing zone district than it is to do something that looks like spot zoning, you know, in the middle. So we've- we've kinda got contradicting rules in planning here. One that says that you go after the least intensive zoning necessary to accomplish your pers- your purpose, and one that says, "Well, you know, if you- if you plug in RM20 or RM10 in there, uh, it's gonna look like spot zoning." But, uh, it's- it's up to the council. Whichever way you wanna go would be correct.
I mean, they- they approved the RS10.
RM10.
RM10.
You go from the five to 10, one step.
You can't go to 20, then 30, then 40. That's not the proper way to do that. Property is not that big. 5,700 square feet property. It's not that big. There's no other thing that's left of it. You said, "We really don't do it. We don't do anything." He still has the right to do the duplex, correct?
That's correct.
Although they kinda cleaned it up a little bit, pretty much for the Planning Commission. And that's what they accepted to do, RM- RM10. And that's all it should be. Shouldn't be any further than that. Property too little.
Mr. Tisdale?
I just wanna- wanna remind my colleagues that the owner has not indicated that he's going to use a property for short-term rentals. By his own admission, he's not made up his mind yet. I don't think we want to rezone parcels for possibly an expanded use other than what was requested, just to save a spot or- or a step in the future. There's no guarantee at this point, and there may be no intent at all to use them for short-term rentals. But based on what you've heard, I think, with Mr. Creel's explanation, and best I could do to give you what the Planning Commission's thinking was, it seems that what's most appropriate is what is, has been recommended by the Planning Commission to go with RM10. There's nothing to preclude the property owner from coming back months or years from now and requesting a change from RM10 to RM10 to RM20 or 30 with a conditional use. But right now, that's not what's being requested. Thank you.
Did you have something?
I have to, real quick, I have to agree with Dr. Tisdale. Uh, based on the information we have, uh, the- the Planning Commission made the right decision. And I believe that, um, you know, if he wanted to do something farther, he can go back through the process and- and- and have that accomplished.
Do you have anything else? All right, we- we have a motion. And we have a- and have a second. All in favor of the, um, a- a motion as amended?
Yeah.
All right. All opposed? All right, we have, in favor was Mr. Demming and Ms. Newman. Everyone else opposed. So now we'll call for the question. All in favor of the- of the item as is? Seven zero. We'll now move to our consent agenda. I have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. Is there any discussion? Mr. Tisdale?
Not a thing, thank you.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Lawrence?
On the property insurance, Mike, uh, the 193,000 increase, that reflects the $51,000 that he saved the other day that, uh, Frank Boda we're talking about is...
It does. That's the new number.
Yeah, so we still have 1.5%, but it's still not bad. We pretty much set that in the budget, what, around 200,000, give or take? So it's inside the budget. Just wanna make sure we had the 51,000 reduced from that. Next one is, uh, G, like in George. Is this insurance money taking care of this?
No, the... Okay, this is the, uh, this is the damage to the Pops Ferry Bridge, where the- the barge ran into the dolphins that would protect the bridge. It will be, ultimately be reimbursed by insurance.
So this insurance money.
This was, this was the emergency PO that was issued to get them started.
And on, uh, the boat ramp on H, like in Henry? The 350,000, you moving to that? When is this project gonna get started? How many launches are they gonna have in that area? That's a- that's an awesome spot up there. That should be the biggest boat launch we have. A number of parking lots all around it. Nothing but parking lot.
Yeah.
Well, it's not our parking lot, but it's- it's a good project, and, you know, we're supplying the- the property that allows this thing to happen at that- at that part of the roadworks. I don't know, Peter, uh, I'm not sure of the total cost, but it's 650,000, I think is what the total figure is.
We just put that in there.
The county, it's a, it's a county project.
Right.
To which we are contributing.
Right. Do you have any idea how many launches they gonna have?
No, but I- I'll find out. It's designed already.
And on, uh, J, on a no- on J, the no-wake zone, how you gonna enforce that around there? A lot of people go through the bridge.
PMR will enforce it. But what we learned...
How far does it go by the causeway? How many feet away from the causeway? A lot of people go through there. So you saying they can't have a no-wake anywhere? Even people going around, coming through there, not going to the causeway, say?
I'm not sure how far it wraps around from the- from the bridge.
Three- 300 feet each- each way on the bridge and 200 feet across in front of the, uh, boat launch. It's- it's actually very dangerous, the way the boats go through there at the speed they do and around the corner. It's a wonder that two boats haven't run into each other before, making that turn. It's a wonder that two boats haven't run into each other before, making that turn at high speed. And it's very dangerous for people trying to launch boats because of the wake as they're trying to put the boats in the water. So, so we talked to DMR about that a good while ago, and they told us that they would be happy to enforce it if we did the signage. But when we, when we began that process, we learned that they, we learned that the county had to be the one to ask. So that's, that's what you see in the resolution.
Okay.
Mike, I had something. When, when this broke on the news, I received numerous phone calls of appreciation for this, for the no-wake effort.
I have a, excuse me, I didn't mean to step on your comments. Are there going to be any, you and I talked about this briefly, Mike, with signage. Is there any way to put buoys out there and who's responsible for the cost, maintenance, or replacement? Somebody is going to run over them. That's the nature of buoys, I guess, but.
Let me say, in my experience with the buoy, especially when the, I think it wasn't Zeta, it was a storm that was around the marina at Keesler. Okay, and that washed up actually in my backyard. So the DMR came and got it, put it back up. So I don't know whether we replace, we have the buoy, we'd put it out there, but again, the enforcement would be up to DMR. But it certainly would put a buoy, I think, put a buoy there.
I'm just, I'm not a boater. I just am familiar with the area, and it'd be nice to have something out there around the boat launch so people understand there's a boat launch there and it would slow down or something. It'd be great if DMR enforces it. An associated question would be, do we have anything like a no-wake zone or should we at the small craft harbor?
We have a small craft, we have Point Cadet. You're supposed to, you're supposed to slow it down with no-wake at Point Cadet when you come around from the east.
Do we have adequate signage out for that? I don't know if we do or not.
I think it's on the, on the bulkhead in both places.
As long as, as long as folks are aware.
I don't know that we have a buoy, though.
Well, and, and I don't know if a buoy is required, but I'm thinking we probably have to have signage if DMR is going to enforce it.
I heard a couple of people as far as the river talking about.
It's actually a law that if you're in one hundred foot of the entrance of that harbor, there's no wake. Now, if you're out closer to Deer Island, you can go. But if you're within one hundred foot of the entrance of that harbor, or the small craft harbor, or Point Cadet, there's no wake. And that's a law that every boater, if you take a boat and test, whatever, or any dock, any launch, it's a hundred foot, that's in effect everywhere.
I did have a conversation today, interestingly enough, about wakeboarding on the river and what, you know, what damage has done to the shores and the people who planted things along the river. So we'll be looking into that situation, but to try to do your, you know, in that river and that confined stuff, it's dangerous and it's also damaging to the shore.
You're going to give up your wakeboard?
I kept that up a long time ago.
I'd give it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lawrence, you have anything else?
Yes, on L and M, this relocation money. That money's already been in the project.
The annoying part about this relocation money is it's, it's, it's paid after, after, after we paid somebody for their house and they move, then they can file for the relocation money. So they, it tends to dribble in and over time. We're probably seeing the last.
Pay for actual cost.
Probably seeing the last of it. It's based on actual, it's reimbursable based on actual. So that's why you see it dribbling in like this, even long after the house is gone, they've moved, but they apply for reimbursement for the relocation.
Basically, they give you X amount of dollars plus up to X amount, Y amount of dollars to relocate based on actual stuff. And I think both of these cases, we were, were in line with what we talked about months earlier.
But that's money sits inside the budget already.
Yeah.
Correct.
The project budget for the main gate.
All right. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Demming? Mr. Glavine?
Only thing, I just want the record to note that I'm going to recuse myself of item D on the consent agenda.
Item what?
D.
D as in David?
Yep.
All right. Mr. Guines?
None.
Then I have nothing. Are there any exemptions other than Mr. Glavine on E, or D, I'm sorry? No one else? Okay, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
I'll be, I'm sorry.
Seven zero.
But I am knowing L and M.
L and M, on him. Yeah, he's a nay almost. All right. Nay on L and M for Mr. Demming, and D, Mr. Glavine's recusing himself. We'll now move to code enforcement hearings. Mr.
Item A on the code enforcement hearing agenda. Division Street Church of Christ Care of Anthony Marshall, that case has been resolved.
All right, thank you. We'll now move to the routine agenda. Do I have a motion?
Go move.
Second.
All right, first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
We have the mayor here, we got Walt here, we got Mike Leonard. Somebody stand up and give us some good news here for a change. There is, here you come.
Yes, we have, I just was messaging Mima while we were in the back. There was some holdup on the seven hundred and fourteen thousand. It was stuck with one of their consultant accounting firms. They promptly got it moving out of the consultant firm, and it's now on its way to the city. So we should have it by our next council meeting or the one just after that.
What about the two hundred and twelve you said last week?
Sir?
The two hundred and twelve thousand?
No, it was seven, it was seven hundred and fourteen. Yeah, that's what's coming. So better than two twelve.
All right.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Seven zero. Do I have an emotion to?
Adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All right, first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. All in favor? Seven zero.
Now I got to go find all my signs that blew away.
Also, the high burning on March.